Approval of minutes, we don't have minutes, but since this is the responsibility of the secretary, no offense, I would like, since the last time we're on television, I'd like to thank Cynthia Galco for the three years she's served, who's our current secretary on the committee, and she has been our secretary for two years, and also served chairing community outreach and chairing policy and on long-range planning, so we will miss you, and we really thank you for all your hard work and commitment to the committee.
Thank you, it's been a great experience.
(applause)
Thank you.
So, next, questions and comments, anything from the audience not on our agenda tonight? Do you like to bring up? Nope, okay, we'll move on. Superintendent's report, good news first, which we have a lot of.
We have a lot of good news, yes, some of it's under communication, but nevertheless. So, we have reached a decision on the principalship at Foster School, and I met on Friday with our candidate, and her name is Beth Wilcox, Beth Wilcox, one of the three semifinalists, and so we have put in the packet this morning, because we always worry about who gets to know something first. So, with that information in the packet this morning, a letter went to the Foster School community, and something in the teacher boxes after school today, and as we speak, in a half hour or so Debbie is sending a letter out, an email letter out to the parent group at Foster, and Jamie notified the committee.
She did, yeah, the search committee.
And, of course, those are the need-to-know people. We had asked whether or not Beth could be here tonight, but very short notice, and she could not, so she will be at the first meeting in May, rather than the next meeting, which of course is the meeting, the night of town meeting, where we have just a very brief time, first of all, and secondly, it's not a televised meeting. So, she will be here, so you can extend your congratulations. I think we felt she was a very strong candidate through the whole process, but I think when Jamie and the team went to visit last Monday.
Last Monday, yeah.
Last Monday, that was a very positive visit, and that was probably what.
It was the best, yeah, it was great. And Carlos was there with us as well.
Mm-hmm. So, anyway, we'll hear much more about that, and I met with her on Friday afternoon, and I actually gave her a copy of the template that you've developed, at least the final draft of it, and asked her to review what I reviewed, what was in it with her, and then she's going to think about it, and I am meeting with her again this Wednesday morning at 7:30 a.m., so maybe I can even share something at the salary negotiation meeting that you're having that afternoon, tell you where we are anyway on that, so, very excited, and I think on the day that we had the visit to Foster, when I did a debriefing with the different groups, there was a lot of support for her as, you know, the preferred candidate, because people, even though you say, "Tell me what you like and what you don't like," rather than "Tell me who you want," people let you know who their preferences are, so that's a great thing, takes one thing off our plate, so to speak. However, we are moving forward with the search for the Director of Student Services, and we have two finalists, and you have something that was put into your packet.
It was, it was, yeah.
Okay. That talks about the next steps, so we've had the interview, of course, with the committee, and then an interview with the central office, and so we're, we have plans for a day coming up when the candidates will come to town, and we'll do a little bit different kind of an internal visit than we typically do, because this is a district-wide job as opposed to in one building, so it's going to be a little harder to schedule and to get into all of the categories we need to get into, but Jamie's got that worked out, and then we'll have a day when we go to visit both of the candidates, and hope to finish that search up and be able to meet our target, which was to recommend that person to you at the last meeting in May, and then that gives you, gives us some time to work with the candidate in terms of whatever their employment circumstances are, and we'll be in good shape, we believe, so.
When are you making those finalists public, and the dates?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we inform the committee of the process, and once that's been done, we're ready to release probably in the morning.
Okay.
That memo that's in your packet was what will be sent out to the community.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will note that the site visit where our team will be traveling to, so it's Suzanne Venice and Stacy Campsano, we'll be visiting Dr. Venice in Brookline on April 25th in the morning, and then visiting Stacy at the Prospect Hill Academy Charter School in Cambridge that afternoon, and so we informed the search committee, we're bringing a subgroup of the search committee to that site visit team, and then the candidates are coming to us for the day on Thursday, May 17th, and we'll have a schedule, you're all invited for morning coffee if you're available, we'll invite some people from the town, and some people from the community, some community leaders to be there, they'll then depart for tours, meeting with faculty and leadership team in the afternoon, have a dinner break, and then the community forums in the evening.
So, you have to come to, to coffee, I was actually interrupted.
We did that for Jamie, so, and it was successful, so we can do this for the next person.
Right, okay, moving on, kindergarten enrollment update, so we had an update on Friday, and we had kind of an unusual thing that happened from two weeks ago, when we had a school committee meeting, and that is that we actually, for the first time I can ever remember this happening, we had 10 people who were on our original list from the census that never picked up a packet, but they picked up a packet in the last two weeks, and then from the category of people who just came in to get packets that weren't on our census list, another 10 people came to pick up packets for the first time, and we tried to get at the bottom of how could that happen, and it appears that these were people that honestly didn't seem to know that kindergarten enrollment was going on. So, the bottom line of all of this, as we sort it out, is that 270 packets have been distributed total, and of those, 256 packets are now returned, so that's good, that gap has narrowed, we only have to chase down a few of those students. So, I'm not quite sure, usually I would say the 270 is it, assuming everybody picking up a packet will return it, but honestly, this year, I'm not sure, but it's not clear, I'm not comfortable at this point in saying we don't need that additional section, but I would never have said that we picked up 20 new packets in a two-week period, so, and I know people are anxious to know about the age breakdown and all of that, and we really need to get the enrollments all set, and we have anecdotal information from the four principals about how many parents came in to meet with them, to talk about kids coming and so on, so until we've got the whole thing settled down, we're not going to talk about that aspect, even though that's of interest to people, about whether or not the number of six-year-olds is significantly smaller. We have to remember that the children who were held out last year when they were five are now six, and obviously, they're going to be coming, but we did have discussions with all of the others, and the principals thought they were very worthwhile discussions, and that a number of people were thinking that their children should go, and many have enrolled, we just can't quantify it yet, because we want to give you a complete report when that's all settled down. The other thing that happened over the last two weeks is, when we enroll kindergarteners, we always ask parents of first graders who will be new to our schools to register at the same time, because for many years, we had that bump-up phenomenon where a number of kindergarten children would go to school elsewhere, they might go to Derby or to St. Paul's or to another preschool, nursery school, childcare, whatever, and so there would be kind of a bump-up for children, and we have to be planning for how many first-grade classrooms we need, as well as how many kindergarten, so in the last few years, we've asked for people to do that enrollment. So, as of last Thursday, we had a total of 11 children that had picked up packets, prior to that, the number was seven, and so now it's 11, and five of those have returned the packets, but interestingly, six of the 11 are all in one building, so these are children that did not attend kindergarten with us, but will be coming to first grade with us. That's just, I think across the district, we can absorb 11 in what we anticipate to be grade-one classes, but if we get another five next week, so.
But 11 is a lot less than it has been in the past years.
Oh, yeah, a lot less than it had been, but it's also more than we've had the last two years that we've had kindergarten, so we'll see on that. All right. I received information about slides for town meeting, that was a new rule last year, that they wanted anyone who was presenting slides as part of their warrant item to have the slides prepared ahead of time, and in this case, the date is next week, and given to Kate Richardson to put on the computer, so that there's no time, no delay in getting things lined up and on the computer. So, we had talked as a school committee prior that perhaps we didn't need to do any slides, but really, the person who's doing the presentation and the comment is the person from the advisory committee, and so we would need to do that, and I know you've talked, Liza and John, and so where are we?
So, I talked with George, or with Dave, and the message through George, that we would, I know our last meeting, we talked about not preparing a big presentation for the high school windows, but Dave thought it would be a good idea, Dave Anderson, to have a very short PowerPoint ready with photographs, and John prepared something, I said I would help put that together, there's a template from the town, so that everything is in, you know, same format, so I can work on that this week, and it's all the basic, I'll just take what you sent me.
It's just the pictures.
Yeah, and so that it's there, and it's ready to go. Lucy Hancock informed me that there are, and I can't remember it off the top of my head, this warrant article is like, well, I got my warrant today, I didn't look at it yet, we're like number 15, so they do all the regular ones, and then there's four articles requesting money, and this, so it's before the marijuana articles.
That's a good point.
So, yeah, it's like, where are you in the discussion of town meeting, so that it would probably make sense to have the pictures, because people will be alert and maybe ask questions, and so, but the intent is for it to be short, brief, very to the point, just show the photographs primarily, and not to get into.
Point.
Yeah, yeah, so, and also, if it's needed, so we can kind of see how things are going and what the feel is going into it, so, just wanted you guys to know that.
Good idea.
We'll throw that together, but it's no more information than we've already received.
And there were pictures from the, when we went to advisory, we passed out those, I don't know, if anybody wants a copy, we can email it to you as well, so.
I think we're in our, at some point, we saw.
We saw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other thing about the town meeting is that the moderator traditionally has a meeting on the Sunday before, so that would be next two weeks from yesterday. Now.
Yep.
Yes, I'm thinking of the break in between, so, but anyone who's involved in the town meeting really should be there, but anyone is welcome to come to that meeting, it's here, and it's at 1 o'clock on that Sunday afternoon, Sunday the 22nd. On Wednesday of this week, there is a school building committee meeting, and the sole purpose of the meeting, really, the sole agenda item, other than minutes approval, is to hear from Don Kennedy, and Don is the individual coming from Nezdek, to talk about the enrollment projection process, to engage the school building committee in some discussion about what kinds of things they perceive may be things that could impact enrollment, that he will investigate. He's coming with kind of a baseline projection, based simply on the kids we have and moving them forward, just simple baseline stuff, but his next steps are to meet with the town clerk, to look at birth and statistics about town growth and/or not, and he will also go to the building department and look at the information they have on the two large projects, and he will go to the building department to check on building, actual building permits, what permits are there in the building. He's asked us to give him the name of three or four realtors in town who sell property in Hingham, to find out what those kinds of patterns are that they're seeing, and so he'll do all of those steps, but really wants to engage, oh, he's looking for some senior people who might remember things, so we gave him me and Eileen McCracken, because she's been here a long time, and Betty Foley is people that might remember, you know, different kinds of projects and things, so it's going to be a very thorough process, but it will start off with a meeting here on Wednesday.
Great, okay, communications?
There's in your packet, a thank-you note to the Foster School community, they took upon a project of sending books and some other supplies, school kinds of supplies, and also some gift cards to a school in Texas, that was really damaged severely by the hurricane last fall, and we got back a wonderful letter, and you have a copy of that letter. I sent you all last night, forwarded to you an email from one of the sixth-grade teachers who was congratulating the school community, the kid in the school community, that the well, that is a result of the long walk to water, which was a total school read last year, has now been built as of February. Hingham students and families raised $15,000 to build this well, and there were some pictures with the thing, and I just think that's an amazing accomplishment, well beyond what anyone had thought of. In the ledger today, there was an article about the school in Rockland, that was a school in Rockland, read the same book, and did the same thing, and also contributed to a well, also in South Sudan, I don't know whether it was the same well or a well in a different place, but, you know, a lot of wonderful things go on in our community every day, and we sometimes don't remember to think about those as much as we should, because there are also some things that aren't always positive, but that is a very positive thing. And also, forwarded, I think, to you last night, that Chrissy.
Can I just say something about the well? I've seen a picture of it.
Can you come up so we can all hear? Thanks, June.
June Gustafson, president of Hingham Education Association, I've seen a picture of the well, and on the bottom of the well, on the concrete, it's embossed, it says Hingham, which is kind of neat, yeah.
Yeah, she sent that along too, so, and, yeah, and you all have it, so that's a good news piece of thing, and also Chrissy O'Connor, again, has, is one of 18 teachers selected for this National History Day project, where it's going to cemeteries and honoring long, long-ago deceased veterans, and interestingly, this time, instead of going to Europe, last year, she and a student went to Normandy, but this year, her assigned cemetery to visit is born in Massachusetts, so she's going to be looking at some World War I heroes, and very excited about that, and, you know, great for her, and great for her students as well, of course.
Does she get a house on the Cape for the summer? That would be such a bad assignment.
She moved to Hingham last fall, recently, so she's probably closer than she would have been, but I don't know whether there's a component of it, because I think there's only one other, I'm not even sure about that, teacher among the 18 from Massachusetts, so she may be the only one that's.
Yeah.
I think she did.
Exciting.
So, but we have other communications.
Okay, yes, so Emma, and quickly, as Emma's coming up to the microphone, I just opened, as I sat down, on Thursday, April 12th, the whole school committee has been invited, if you're available, for East School is having National Dear Day, Drop Everything and Read, and if anyone would like to be a guest reader at East School on Thursday, we can contact Cindy Barrett and the reading team, and arrange a time, so, I know it's short notice, but I just opened that up. So, Emma Quilty, our student representative, student communications?
Going into fourth term, people are starting to get excited for summer break coming up soon. First off, the Hingham Student Council continues to support the food pantry every Monday in hopes to give a helping hand to local organizations. Thanks to our health teacher, Ms. Beatty, students in health classes today met an inspiring speaker for Mind Your, Minding Your Mind. The Hingham student body is happy to be provided with powerful and inspiring allies in the attempt to promote mental health among our students. In less than two weeks, Earth Day will be here, as Mr. Swanson posted on Twitter, the first annual Great Massachusetts Cleanup Day of Hingham, organized by Cleaner Greener Hingham, will occur, and you can find more about it on his Twitter, he posted a link. This upcoming Wednesday, Hingham Cares, along with any parents concerned about substance abuse among teens, are able to go see a film called If They Had Known, and this will be held at 7:00 p.m. at the high school, and I know there's also a slideshow and talk with a, I think a doctor that researches this stuff right now, about vaping and whatnot. Lastly, as break approaches, the student council thought it was only appropriate to have a pajama day Thursday, so hopefully everyone will do that as a nice spirit day. I encourage all of you too, as well, to show work in your pajamas.
I'm in.
Love to.
I don't have a judge with real, I have a lawyer showing up in her pajamas. Emma, I would like to follow up on one thing, you can send your congratulations back to the high school student council, I went to the high school school council meeting on Wednesday, and the students reported on the vaping assembly that you had, or anti-vaping assembly, education forum, and that they noticed a dramatic shift in a reduction in the amount of vaping going on in the school, and actually saw kids throwing away their jewels, and the bathrooms are cleaner, and that the message really got through to the kids about how dangerous it is and the cancer issues, and so the students deemed that as a success, so, congratulations back to the students for taking the initiative, and it seems to be helping, kids are getting the message, so that's great for the student initiative, and the students were the ones that organized that assembly, so good for you, and keep it up, that's great.
Okay.
But I wanted the committee to know that there's progress on that front to be reported on, so, okay, other communications, do you want to talk about the?
Well, just to comment that due in part, not entirely, but in part to passing an amendment to the current budget last week, and also the availability of some other funds, our circuit breaker funding has increased, and the goal, the amount that is available because of the passing of the amendment, and also because there was some supplementary funds that had not been expended from an account or a piecement account that they set aside for emergency funding, that our funding will be brought from, and everyone's funding, from 65%, which it was at the beginning of the year, up to 72%, and still some hope that can go further than that, but for right now, it will go from 65 to 72. We haven't quantified exactly what those dollars are yet, but that's a good increase of money that was owed us, simply not part of the original budget, so that's good news. At the same time, there has been some earmarking money, and that's what they call the dollars that we used to get for things like security, and as part of the annual budget, there are always some earmarked funds that are set aside. We didn't know much about how many earmarked funds there would be, but there are some for us, and there's some in the area of safety and security, which John knows about, not a lot of money, but we will be getting that as well, and it'll come to us in the form of a grant, so we got the information as to how we have to fill out the grant. As well, at the federal level, there has been some additional money that has come to two of the smaller grants, Title I.
Is deduction.
For next year.
IDA was one, and the other was Title IV, was it Title IV, Jamie?
Four of five, but they're too small, they're too small of grants, and IDEA, and that amount is increased by 5,000, not a huge amount of money, but it's going in the right direction, so, that information has always all come to us in the last week or so.
All right, on to new business, 6.1, receive a draft resolution on school safety and act as appropriate. At our last meeting, we were having a discussion about a communication we had received from the Dover School Committee members that we didn't follow up on, on a potential resolution in regard, in response to the Parkland shooting, and we had decided not to participate in that, but committee members wanted to do something, so we had Carlos and Michelle and Ed drafted something, and so they have something to present to us, and then we'll have a discussion about how to go further, so do you guys want to?
Sure.
Share with us your thinking and?
Sure, so, we got input from, you know, the three of us, and including the students, Emma Quilty, along with the, what is it, the student council advisor.
Yep, faculty advisor.
Faculty advisor, Nicole, what is it?
Piantas.
Piantas, provided us with, you know, their feedback, and Dr. Gawa also provided us with the whole input, and we thought it was just, you know, important to do this as a joint resolution, understanding that, you know, obviously, a resolution is voted by the school committee, but it's nice to have other bodies joining us. We are not reinventing the will, this is actually, we did some research, and this is based on the Fermi Hand, the school committee and elected officials, they came up with a joint resolution, invited the student body. We got some language here from a letter that Dr. Schreier had forwarded to us, where, you know, the independent schools out there wrote a nice letter to the Boston Globe, I believe, right, Dr. Schreier?
That's right.
And so we took portion of the language from there, in addition to that, Michelle did some research, what is the organization, Michelle?
Gun Violence Archive.
So, this is a combination of different sources, so this is what we are presenting for discussion, and this is just a draft. Joint resolution of members of the Hingham Student Body, Hingham School Committee, and Superintendent of Hingham Public Schools on school safety and security. Whereas, law enforcement reports over 800 children under the age of 17 have been killed or injured by gunfire in the United States since January 1st, 2018. Whereas, members of the Hingham Student Body, Hingham School Committee, and Superintendent of the Hingham Public Schools recognized that ensuring public safety and the safety of students and the school personnel requires coordinated efforts. of students and the school personnel requires coordinated efforts among law enforcement, public health, social services, family resources, school personnel, and community leaders. Whereas, we believe reasonable and practical national, state, and local policies can reduce the threat of violence and the use of weapons, including firearms, in schools and other public venues, and whereas, the impact of our students' collective voices in response to the threat of violence in our schools has led us to demand action.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that members of the Hingham Student Body, Hingham School Committee, and the Superintendent of Hingham Public Schools, one, continue to prioritize school safety and security, educator and staff professional development, mental health supports, and connection and communication with students and families; two, call upon the United States Congress and state legislatures, including the Massachusetts State Legislature, to prioritize public safety, including the safety of students and school system employees, by funding public health research on firearm-related issues, supporting enhancements to school safety infrastructure, advancing mental health supports, and passing legislation to effectively regulate access to firearms; and three, join the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, opposing arming educators in our public schools.
So, essentially, you know, we heard our colleagues loud and clear that you wanted to stay away from banning guns because of the lack of our expertise, and to focus instead on safety and security of our students and faculty. So, you know, we believe that this is reasonable, and we hope that you support this resolution.
Okay. I personally had, I had some edits to it, and I shared them with you, I'll wait, but if others have, or if you'd like me to explain what my thinking was, and then others, I don't want to go first, but... Did your edits get any of the packet here or no? No, I believe I emailed, I emailed them to everyone, so...
Yes, we have a clean copy in your, in red line.
So, I didn't have...
Excuse me, do you want me to try to take it out of the, I think I did it from the...
You can, if, that's fine. Yeah, so I didn't have a big issue with the content of what was written. One of my concerns is that, I guess my primary concern, is that this is a, I understand coming from the joint resolution, and I saw then what you did with Framingham, however, the way you wrote it is that it's a resolution of members of the Hingham Student Body, and we, they, we need the entire student body to vote to support this statement. We can't make that general of a statement. If we want to do something joint, it could be with the Hingham High School Student Council, and the student council as a body could vote on this to then agree to declare a joint resolution, and that's what Framingham did.
So initially, we did, so initially, we did have the Hingham Student Council, but Nicole actually had suggested that it be members of the Hingham Student Body, because it was more than just the student council kids who...
Okay, so that, well, that's why I took it, that's the only reason I took it out, is because it's just, they have to represent themselves in agreeing to this, and we don't have that representation. And so, I acknowledged the students in it because I added, whereas the impact of student representative Emma Quilty's reports on the collective voices and actions of students in response to the threat of violence in our school has inspired us to demand action. I did purposely change the word led to inspired, because that wasn't what caused us to do this, it was a component of it, it didn't lead it, now, that's very specific wording, but, so, that's my thinking on this, of that acknowledging the students, but can't speak for the entire Hingham Student Body, so...
We changed it, though, and from a point of order, you may be correct, I don't know, but we didn't say the Hingham Student Body, that's why we said members of the Hingham Student Body. So, not to encompass all the student body, but there are members of the student body who agree with this.
But a resolution implies a vote was taken, so there has to be a vote by some entity, and an entity has to be an identify, it can't just be some random students that say that, you'd have to identify, is it going to be every student in the building who gets to vote on it, is it going to be the members of student council, because a resolution does imply that there has been a vote to pass it. So, that, that's the only problem logistically for me.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I mean, as I said, as a point of order, that could be correct, so maybe we, and maybe we want to discuss whether or not it is a resolution, or is it something else, because maybe the student body does want...
Well, so, I was going, my thought was, we as this body, come to consensus on what we want to do, vote on it, and have something, we can share it with others to then, you know, you agree with this, you sign on to it, then we can do a press release of this is a joint resolution, that's where I was coming from, from the, you know, each group or person, even Dr. Gallow says, yes, I support this, and, and that was sort of how I read the Framingham statement, too, is that was all the, all the entities signed on.
Yeah, they came together and really wanted to do this jointly. The same thing here is when we put this together, we talked to Dr. Gallow and asked her if she, you know, was willing to have her name put into this, so, and she said, of course, I mean, she is our leader, so, it's just, I mean, it looks much stronger, the message.
Yeah.
So, if there is a way we can incorporate that at a later time, you know, we vote on and then incorporate. I'm not even sure, do they usually vote on items, the student bodies?
No, they, no, they don't.
So, I mean, it's, yeah, because, I mean, obviously, we did, you know, through Michelle, talk to, you know, their leader, so, that was a math.
Or if, if individual students wanted to sign as individuals, that they agreed to it, I mean, that, it's, this was so broad of, you know, the way it was worded, members of the student body, I mean, that, that's the entire school district, and we can't represent, or how do you represent them, so, that's... That was kind of a major thing for me, but, and I'm not opposed to having students involved, but just do it in the right way. Then, the, the first line, I just, I was Googling this, and I couldn't find that fact even when I Googled it, so, I just replaced it with, where I used what the D E S E used, whereas we were deeply troubled by the February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen shooting, I don't need to read all these. So, identifying the Parkland shooting, the Columbine, Sandy Hook, and that these were specific school safety issues, as opposed to the statement about the eight hundred children were, was generally about children and gun violence, and I was looking at it more of school-specific, and that was just, that's where I was personally was coming from, but...
Yeah, and we discussed that a little bit, about whether or not we wanted to have that statement, so we basically were discussing, did we want to, it to be about student safety, whether on campus or off, or whether it had to do with just when students were on campuses, if that was, so we sort of went, which way do we want to go, and we felt that we were interested in safety of children and students wherever they were, whether they were on school grounds or not on school grounds, but, and that statistic was taken off of that gun violence archive, which takes data from law enforcement, but, so, I mean, I think we could go either way on that opening, because we were sort of torn between that, too, did we wanted to just talk specifically about school-related violent incidences, or did we want to be just more broad and talk about shooting in general?
Yeah, and I'm open, I was just like, what, where is this fact coming from?
Right, and I mean, it's, well, sadly, that number has already changed. It's like eight hundred and fifty-two now, a week later.
But I, and I'm not committed to which way in that department I wanted to see it go, I just, the way it started out with, whereas law enforcement reports, I liked how Liza flipped it to being, whereas we, because this, to start it out with a fact, just throwing out a fact about some law enforcement report, was starting it on the wrong tenor from my perspective anyhow, we want to start out with, we're bothered by this, not just...
So, even using the, we are, we are deeply troubled by reports of over eight hundred children, or even...
Do we need to footnote that, for lack of a better term?
And, yeah, we would need to footnote where that came from.
Sure, you could put that in there. Yeah, I mean, when I was researching on resolution, it just had said that the whereas should be your facts, so...
Right.
Troubled by isn't really a fact, I mean, it's a fact, we are troubled by it, but so I was sort of just trying to make them be...
Well, we're troubled by the fact, so, yeah, citing the fact, yes. And then, I added a line of, whereas a safe school environment, that ensures both the physical and emotional safety of students and staff, creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement. I wanted some positive of that having a safe environment is good for improving academics for staff and the students, and I lifted that from the California School Board Association resolution that I found, or I lifted it from somebody else. And then, so, the base, my other edits are just making this only from the Hingham School Committee. And then, in the, therefore, number two, I was reading this, and I was thinking, you know, who are we actually sending this resolution to, you know, who is this a statement to? And so, I'm thinking we're sending this to our representatives, and that's why I changed this to calls upon members of, members of the United States Congress, and just the Commonwealth and Massachusetts State Legislature, as opposed to all state legislatures across the country, because, you know, are we really...
I mean, you call on Congress overall, but obviously, you know, my intent, you know, and that is why I even offered to be a signature, to have a signature here, because I am intending to attend the Day on the Hill in Massachusetts on the twenty-fifth, so I'll be, I'll be seeing some politicians, local politicians, but at the same time, I'm attending the Democratic Convention in June, and I'll be meeting with, you know, our delegation there, a congressman, but that's only piece of it, you know, that I intend to hand deliver a copy of the letter to them. Hopefully, we can send the letter in advance via mail, but that would not stop us from actually reaching out to the chair of the Safety Committee, if that individual happens to be a congressman from another state, you know what I mean? That is why if he reads like the way it is, it's not, you know, we're sort of like addressing overall, because the body overall that will be voting on things, not just our, you know, our leadership, our delegation.
Well, okay, I mean, I guess we should discuss, who do we want to, who is this a resolution to send to? And, and as far as signatures on this, the statement of the resolution should just be the resolution and the vote, and then, any cover letters can have signatures on them, so that was another thing that I had, so, so those were my edits.
And I only had two things that I, one thing that I would prefer not be in here, and then one change, I, I have, I have no problem with supporting enhancements to school safety infrastructure, advancing mental health supports, but I don't, I don't like the, by funding public health research on firearm-related issues, that's very nebulous to me, and I had, I have a problem with that, that, those words. And then also, I liked up above where you said, whereas we believe reasonable and practical national, state, and local policies can reduce the threat of violence, I would like to see where it says in number two, under resolved, you have, and passing legislation, I'd like to carry that language down, and passing reasonable and practical legislation versus just legislation.
See, I already have a problem with that, because what's reasonable to you and practical to you is not reasonable to me or practical to me.
But legislation...
And then we're asking also to have legislation passed, is there legislation missing? My problem right now is that I feel like this is completely out of our purview. As I said with the last petition, I'm going to repeat myself, this is not the responsibility of the school committee with firearm legislation, I don't feel comfortable, I don't know enough about it, I feel like it's outside of our expertise. If this was clearly on school safety, I might support it, but right now, the way it's written, I am going to have to say no. I mean, it clearly says, and passing legislation to effectively regulate access to firearms. And then you are reaching out to Congress, and my problem is that we're Hingham School Committee members, we're not legislative bodies, we're regulatory bodies, and I don't think we can be speaking to anyone else outside of the state of Massachusetts.
Well, that's why I was saying we would be speaking to our representatives in Congress and not all of Congress.
But the way this was, even the reasonable and practical, I have a problem with it, because what is reasonable and practical?
So, what would you propose in Leo of reasonable and practical, how, how, what other words would you use it?
I think we need to, I think we need to stick to safety, school safety, and have discussions about school safety, I don't think that this resolution is going to keep our school safe.
And that we agree with you, and we stated the last time, that no resolution in banning marijuana is going to keep marijuana from our schools, although marijuana, by law, is already stopped from being the school property so many miles. So, we need to be sort of like uniformly, if we are going to do a resolution on save our public schools, a resolution on saving, on banning marijuana, where we are not banning alcohol in town, and we are supporting certain things, we have to come together when it comes to safety of our students, you ask for something that's on safety, it's not about my passion, it is about what's taking place in the United States of America, there is no other country on earth that the students have been affected by gun violence, and you guys didn't want the word gun violence, we remove that, be to please you guys. Now, the words practical and reasonable is a problem, propose something that we can work with.
Well, and also, Kay, I would say that in this whereas, reasonable and practical, that is regarding reducing the threat of violence and the use of weapons, including firearms, in schools and other public venues, so it's very specific to in schools and other public venues, it's not regarding general gun laws and policies, so that, you know, reasonable and practical is, it's very, it is very broad.
Right, and maybe if it's...
It's not specific.
Right, and maybe if it said, and passing reasonable and practical, literally picked up now reasonable and practical policies regarding the use of weapons, including firearms in school, and didn't say, and passing legislation to effectively regulate access to firearms, because that goes all the way back to this gun, whole gun control issue, that we don't feel like necessarily we're the right people to be speaking to that.
I mean, I, our board's name is going to be on this resolution, and it can be used by any outside organization, and so I think we need to be careful about what words we choose, and what we are, what are, really are we trying to... and so I think we need to be careful about what words we choose, and what we are, what are, really are we trying to accomplish with this? And that's why I do think we need to maybe reflect on what kind of resolutions do we as a board want to be signing?
What have we done? We've done marijuana, and that was to the-
We've done, right, the no, no retail sales in the town of Ham.
And that was specifically to Hingham?
But that was specific to the town of Ham.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And then- And then we did the charter school, but the ballot question, very general.
Right.
We didn't do, we did our own version of it.
And that was to the state of Massachusetts?
That was to the voters.
Right. But to Massachusetts, okay. So this is broader reaching than either of those?
Um, well, that's, that's actually something we have to, we do have to decide as a body, who do we want this to be delivered to? Who is this a resolution to?
Yeah.
Um, and so, if, you know, if Carlos is thinking, this is, I'm taking this and giving it to every member of Congress, whereas I personally read it as, I wanted this to go to our Massachusetts members of, the people who represent us in Congress and our state legislature, and not all state legislatures across the country. And then, you know, I don't know what other people's points of view were, but that was, that, when I was reading it, that's what I was thinking.
We happen to be very lucky that, you know, we live in a state where our gun laws is pretty strong. As a matter of fact, even to make it stronger, the Attorney General just won a lawsuit against, you know, some, you know, gun manufacturers. I mean, the last two years, uh, you know, uh, she was able to push, uh, you know, law where, you know, those guys selling guns couldn't sell, you know, sell to weapons in Massachusetts. And, you know, some individuals appealed it, and she just won. So, we are very fortunate that the state of Massachusetts, we don't have an issue. So, going to the State House to log our legislators to pass stronger gun restrictions, it's not going to do much, because we already have them. Uh, the main thing here too is, you know, you know, chaos, you know, and I think it's important that I say it, that, you know, what is the purpose of this? The purpose of this is actually, uh, it is a piece of paper, and it is, um, just to speak to our student body that we represent here, that we actually were elected to represent, that we stand with them. And, you know, Liza is right, I mean, you know, and I understand, I mean, I'm trying to, we're trying to reach a consensus here. And now, I mean, you, you picked on a point where, you know, it's not just our students' voice that led us to do this. No, I mean, this came to us by some other group, and we didn't agree with their language, and now we are crafting something that we hope to like. But it would be imperative, in my opinion, that this body fully supports something that is reasonable. And if we, you know, if it's not reasonable, let's make it reasonable, so we can have the support of everyone. Okay, because the, the thing, you know, the truth of the matter is that I'm not here for my two kids. I'm here for forty-five hundred students that, you know, goes to our public schools. And we have to, you know, when it comes to a little thing like this, it's sensitive. Perhaps, you know, it doesn't speak to my personal value, but I have to put my personal value aside and speak on behalf of the community. That's, that's what we are here for.
I don't think anyone's breathlessly waiting to hear what we have to say about gun control.
But it's not about gun control, Kay. Let's, let's be real here. Twenty-three students have died shot to death in schools in twenty-eighteen. It's April ninth. In my opinion, I mean, and I believe yours too, that is twenty-three too many. So, these have to stop. And us saying it as a board, and as a school committee, and as a community, that this needs to stop. So legislators, do your job. Make it stop. However that is-
And that's where we disagree, because you are now asking for more legislation for these things to stop, and I would disagree that more legislation may not help that.
I didn't say it has to be more. I just said do your job, effectively-
Then write your legislature.
I am trying to do that, as a school committee member, which I have a right to do, and you have a right to disagree, but I feel, like Carlos is saying, and I think other people not in agreement, that as a school committee, we do have a responsibility to sometimes do just more than get, hire and fire a superintendent, put, put the budget together, and set policy. Sometimes you have to take a stand. Kids took a stand, and I want to take a stand.
But that was a student-led movement.
And this is going to be a school committee-led movement. And I think we need, people need to take a stand.
Well, I'm all in favor of taking a stand against violence in schools, but I'm certainly never going to step on anybody's rights to bear arms. So it just has to be very carefully drafted.
Me neither, and that's why this doesn't say that anywhere.
But that's why I'm saying, some of this still goes beyond the scope for me, like that sentence about funding public health research on firearm-related issues. What does that mean? I have no idea what that means. And so, now I'm, and that's, that makes me sensitive specifically because it's asking for money to be spent, and we're asking for money to be spent on something that we don't even know what we're asking for, to, that goes too far for me. And it's not just about school-related safety. Well, what if, okay, so, the other thing in that number two, under resolved, one of the things that I did change, I forgot to tell you guys I changed, um, that it says, call upon Congress and Massachusetts State Legislature to prioritize public safety. I actually changed prioritize to take sufficient action to address, because I looked at it and I said to myself, oh, wait a minute. What are we prioritizing over? And I specifically was thinking of funding. Are we asking them to prioritize this over the Foundation Budget Review Commission and the funding of education in our classrooms? And so, so to me, I was like, wait a minute, I don't want them necessarily prioritizing all of these things over-
Actual education, right.
Actual education funding, and so, I, so I did change that so that they're taking sufficient a- action, but, I mean, what if we eliminated the funding of public health research, and then the last one, the passing of legislation to regulate access to firearms, which-
Okay, so hold on.
I mean, we already have that in Massachusetts, but we leave the other things in there, which are taking action about school safety issues.
So take what you wrote, and then strike what? By funding public health research and-
And then the last one, the passing legislation.
Support and enhancements, fine, right?
Supporting enhancements to school safety, infrastructure, I have no problem with.
Right.
And advancing mental health supports, I don't, I actually don't have, because I think that's part of our whole health and well-being concept. I don't have a problem with that, because that's something we're talking about very proactively anyhow ourselves. Those two things, I certainly don't have an issue with.
So the last, the last one you had a problem with, and passing legislation?
Well, at least as it was ordered.
I mean, we already passed in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I mean, in Massachusetts, we-
So, okay, so strike that out, and, okay. So why don't we go back to the beginning?
Oh, wait, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, to take sufficient action also is subjective.
Yes, I was saying that, yeah.
To take action.
Okay, yeah.
Take action?
Because sufficient is subjective.
So take action. All right, so let's go from the beginning, right? So, a combination of what you proposed and what we had, so, we would be reading, and tell me if I'm wrong, whereas we are, we were deeply troubled by the law enforcement reports. Would that be okay to say the law enforcement reports?
As long as we see where they came from.
And the rest, yeah, no, yeah. And we keep the rest that Michelle did there. So, deep trouble.
Where did those come from, Michelle?
Gunviolencearchive, I think, I'm sorry.
Dot, it's dot dot org. It's a nonprofit.
I have it. Uh, gunviolencearchive.org.
Thank you.
There you go.
And it's legit?
Yeah.
So we keep the rest of that, if that's okay with you guys?
The rest of what?
Uh, of, of the first one, on ours.
Well, I mean, no offense, Carlos, but I think what you need to do is somebody needs to redraft this, and then it needs to come back again. I can't sit here and do it, I don't like this.
So I was going to say, in the efforts of time management-
Yeah.
Why don't I clean up the copies, or copies with everyone's suggestions? And then, put it back on for not next time, because we're, um, oh, and Cynthia won't be here.
So for the meeting after town meeting?
Well, why don't we look at it at the next one quickly, and then we can vote it at the May seventh one?
Okay, so put it in the packet for, okay, all right.
Since we're on TV.
Should, should we send it to everyone before the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I have a question, if I have questions or thoughts around this, and I don't, I just don't, I'm not totally versed well in open meeting, but could I, can I talk to Kay? Could Kay and I sort of work on this second round?
That's fine.
Yeah, if it's just the two of you.
Right, would that, would you sign up for that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because then we can come to consensus.
Okay.
If, you know, I mean, if we can do it, everybody can.
I'm very willing.
I mean, the other thing is too, we can think about, if we, so if, if at our next meeting, which is not televised, but if we can come to consensus, then maybe we can offer it out to the students, and if students want to sign on to it for our May seventh meeting, then that gives us time to have other people that are interested in declaring support for something too.
All right, so we'll work on it this week.
All right.
Thank you guys for doing all of it.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure. Can you come to the-
What else do I need to say?
Address.
Uh, three seventy Gardner Street. Um, I just want to say, uh, I appreciate you all actually tackling this really tough issue. I really do. I mean, I enter the school systems just almost every day, and we talk about it. What would you do if a active shooter were to come in? And, um, it's important that we do talk about it. You can't turn your back on it, and not regulating firearm violence is like not regulating the Ebola virus. So, I really appreciate you guys doing this, and I do breathlessly await the next draft. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a difficult issue to-
Yeah.
Because it's covering a lot of-
But we will-
Continue to persevere.
Yes, and we are all focused, and it's a matter of determining the right words to express what we're trying to accomplish, so. Okay. Next, six point two, to receive a new policy section six point seven, screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment program, otherwise known as SPRT, as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee. This is a first reason, reading, and it's a draft policy that reflects the SPRT mandate by the Department of Public Health, and it was reviewed by the nurses and is recommended by the Policy Subcommittee. So, um, Cynthia Ju, or Dot, do you want to take us through this?
It was a good outline. And we've met last week, and we've talked about this twice so far, and this is basically a policy that covers the equal void screening that has been done at the middle school and is currently being done at the high school. When is the high school? It's in grade seven and nine. When is the high school? Is it all set? Is it done?
Yes, oh, yeah, they, that's how we got this reviewed. They were having a debriefing meeting-
Afterwards.
After the administration was done in both buildings.
Okay, so, um, this reflects mass general laws, and, um, basically just outlines what's going to happen. The students shall be screened in two grades, in, one in the middle school, one in the high school. We did seven and nine. So, out for first reading, and, um, let me know if you have any questions.
I, we should add that there are, obviously, need to be procedures that go with this. We have a draft of those, but can't finalize the procedures until we finalize this language. But the procedures would include the samples of the letter, the sample survey, um, the, uh, sign-off form that a student could use to indicate that he didn't want, he or she didn't want information shared. I also did check, there were some questions about how the information gets, um, sent back to the Department of Public Health, and it turns out that there is a template, an online template, that was created by the Department of Public Health. And as the survey is being given, the nurses enter the data, question by question, and then the, um, survey, uh, the template prompts them, uh, if A was the answer, then we need to remember to do Y, and if B was the answer, you need to remember to do what. So that at the end of the administration, and there are no names on the form, it's simply age of student, no names, and the area where you enter the data, and then it simply gets downloaded directly. So there's no transfer of, of information that has names attached to it, um, and it is sent in that way. Plans for next year are to do it, um, in the fall, in terms of the middle schools. And at the high school, because it's done using gym class time, they would do half the ninth graders in the fall semester, because that's when they have gym, and the other half would be in January, at the beginning of the second semester. That's why that, we wondered why that was a difference in, in time. They perceived, I talked to, um, uh, the two nurses today at the buildings, um, and not just Debbie, and felt it went smoothly. There were no, uh, issues that they could think about. The, the, um, state, um, is not planning to release the data by, by building, um, only in total. And so, um, they certainly couldn't share any particular results that may have come up. They did stress that it was important to know, and it is in writing, that if there were any, you know, serious or dangerous situations, that people would have been notified, so.
It strikes me, there's a lot of options for opting out.
Did we have a lot of people opting out?
Sounds pretty comprehensive, so.
The procedures are very long, so we tried to make the policy as, as, you know, tight as we could.
Okay. Okay, so this is a first reading, so we will vote on this at our, well, send in your comments, and we will vote on it at our next meeting, I guess, um, or a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I think if there weren't comments, that we could vote at the next meeting. It is a posted meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but if there were things that need to be discussed, you might want to wait till the following.
Yeah, so we'll see what, if we get comments back from it.
Great, yeah.
Okay. All right, six point three, to receive the spring two thousand and eighteen coaching assignments. So you all got those in your packets. And then six point four, to hear an update from the Long Range Planning Subcommittee on the fiscal nineteen capital budget allocation of one million twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, recommended by the Capital Outlet Committee and the Advisory Committee, and act as appropriate. So, Ed.
The, uh, Long Range Planning Subcommittee met earlier this evening, um, to come up with a, I use the term shortfall, or a negative delta of three hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The difference between the approved, uh, Capital Outlet Subcommittee and the Advisory Committee is the allocation of one oh two three nine six two, and our proposal of one three six eight five two nine. With input from the members, along with, uh, along with John, John Ferris, Doug Foley, and Katie Hartman, we went through a series of spot reductions, uh, and were able to frankly come up with the number of one oh two three nine six two. So, if there's conversation, fine, but I'd make a motion that we, I, I would make a motion to accept the allocation of a million, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for the FY nineteen capital budget.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay.
Unless Cynthia wants to second.
Oh, go ahead. Can you tell us what you eliminated, and if you kept the timing system?
The timing system?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
It was mostly, I mean-
It was mostly, I mean, Ed can go through line by line, it was mostly preventative maintenance.
Okay.
And, and things that Doug and Katie felt like, you know, could be accomplished longer term, or in a, you know, another way.
Okay.
There's an electrical outlet that we talked a lot of time about possibly raising it, as opposed to redoing the whole thing. Just that kind of stuff.
The middle school.
Oh, so altering what we're going to do there, as opposed to moving the whole thing? We're, we're still going to fix it.
Yeah, well, Katie had an idea of trying to divert a water flow, which we could, we could attempt, you know, this year, until we could get money to do that. That was 15,000, but the, you know, the bucket was the preventative maintenance things that we figured we could defer. We know some stuff may break, but we will have to use operating budget to handle it. And, um, you know, there was a dump truck that was requested. That was $60,000 that came right off. See, we had a $40,000 worth of air handles at the high school, which is really pending the, the clear story window issue. So, um, you know, we took some chunks off there. And then we had some monies in this for unexpected maintenance, so those type of issues came out as well. So, we'll, we know next year, the operating will hit these things. We will have some problems, but we'll just have to make do with the operating budget. And what we kept in was the things that Doug and Katie, and, and I, I think, I think they did a very good job calling this list that we think are really critical to the operations.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Great.
If anybody wants a copy of what we came up with, I'm happy to give you one as well.
Um, Dot, did you want to comment on any of that?
Yeah, just a quick, we have just one update, because you remember from the last meeting that, uh, we are going to come back to you at the first meeting in May, which will be subsequent to our having met with the principals at the elementary level. Jamie and I meet with them in one meeting, and then with the secondary principals, then each of the directors in a separate meeting, to know where we need FTEs and where they should go, and, uh, also by then anticipate that we'll have some more, uh, some more changes. We did have one change here, which didn't go in the right direction, and that's reflected on this slide. So, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, and here are copies of that. When, uh, when we last met, the gap at that point was 52,000 something. We had made a lot of reductions, um, to that point in, in the budget. Some were cuts of things that we were requesting, or non, or non-funding of things that we had requested, and others were changes in circumstances, which were literally cuts, but reductions in the bottom line. So, we're at 52,000. We had a teacher that earlier in the spring had indicated that she was going to take next year off for childcare. She's on leave this year, that she would take next year off, and that would be, have been, uh, and what we recorded as a savings of, I need to find it.
28985. It's at the bottom, as well as in the middle, but you can see at the bottom.
Yeah, but I'm looking for the one in the middle. Uh, where is it?
It's right there.
Right here.
Your crux is there. Sort of like that center.
So, where it says an extended leave, and, uh, the savings was, uh, 28569, which we took at that, at that point.
985?
And then, excuse me?
Oh.
That's not in.
Yeah, the same number.
The same? It was 28985.
Two, twenty-seven, two-eight, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, where is it? I saw it.
It's right smack.
It's down one more, one more.
One more.
There you are, right there.
Oh, I'm on the wrong call.
That's it, right there.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
All right, 28985, and that was back in February, the end of February. So, of course, that meant that we then had to remove that from our prior list of savings, and that's what you see down at the very bottom, uh, the minus, restored that leave of absence, and, uh, there's the minus that goes with it, and so that means that we will have reduced the budget by 712130, and that leaves a new gap, a bigger gap now than the 52, because we had to add that 28985, and so the gap is now 81345. Now, that was before we heard about the additional circuit breaker money that's coming in, the additional, um, amount that's coming for IDVA and so on. And we also have at least the possibility that we could, uh, remove the kindergarten teacher, the new kindergarten teacher, but I don't want to do that at this point. Those are the kinds of things we would bring back to you, but we, you know, certainly, um, with what we know is coming in additional dollars, that gap will be closed, but, um, it was not the direction that we had hoped to go. So, 81345 is where we stand at the moment, and we made a commitment to live within the budget that we anticipate will be voted by town meeting, and that will still be the case. But we'll be looking for two things, what additional dollars that may come to us in the form of, uh, changes in personnel particularly, and, uh, secondly, what our needs are at the time we meet in early May with all of the officers.
And another budget thing, at, also at the early May meeting, May 7th meeting, Lucy Hancock, Chair of Advisory, informed me that the Advisory Committee has, um, made some updates to the financial policy for the town. They have a new draft, and, um, I will send it to all of you. And at the May 7th meeting, Lucy and Dan Coglan, who's been working on that, um, will come to go over that and answer any questions for people, and then Advisory plans to vote that in June. So, there's enough time to still be reviewing that, and then they'll go to the Selectmen with it later on in May, um, as well. So, um, May 7th, we have, we're going to have a lively meeting, lots going on, so. So, I will send that to all of you. Anything else budget related? And so, 6.5, to receive notification, the appointment of Nancy Gardner, Food Service Technician at Plymouth River. Welcome, Nancy. And then, uh, 6.6, receive notification of, uh, fully year leave of absence next year of Laura Hyman at East School. And then 6.7, to receive notification of several resignations, um, Gabrielle Pound, an English teacher at the high school, and unfortunately, two central office staff who've, um, who've all gotten to know Liz Redman, who's the receptionist, who's already left, and Kate Doyle is going on to bigger and better things. Kate, thank you very much for everything you've done for us. You've been awesome. We have a couple more days to, um, see her, but, and she's around town, so thank you for everything you've done for us. We really appreciate it.
There were a couple of times at these meetings that Kate has run across the street. Lives across the street to bail us out from some wall.
So then we have a new bus monitor, or no, one leaving, Susan Murphy, and Erin Campbell, a food service technician, has departed, so we wish them all well. Anything, 48 hours? No? Subcommittee and project reports, um, including, um, just an update on our high school fees, um, discussion. Michelle and Dot had just some quick updates of where we are in that process. We haven't, we haven't done anything yet, um, but Michelle, you want to go first?
Sure, um, I spoke to Rick Swanson relatively briefly at the high school. I'm going to work with Mariella Haller in the athletic department to get, um, a, a list of, or a breakdown of how many kids are playing one, two, and three sports, sort of figure out from there. And then, we had some very brief discussions, Rick and I, about other fees that could potentially come through, and he was not liking the idea at all. Of different, just like to the clubs, like, should there be some sort of club fee, whatnot? And it sort of felt like it might be cost prohibitive, but we're going to start with the athletic fees, figure out sort of how much that income's bringing in, what we think might be some synergies, if you can find them, in having a different fee structure, whatnot, so we're going to start there.
Can you maybe go back to him and ask him, like, what other groups are collecting fees?
Yes, so I'm sorry.
So that it's kind of, like, we're not necessarily going to implement a new one, but-
Yes, so I'm sorry, yes. I do, I am developing a list of all the clubs, and any of them that do, any clubs or activities that do collect a fee.
Okay.
Whether it's booster, or just dues, you know, or even, um, maybe like a supply fee.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if you're in robotics, do you have to sort of come with your own?
Okay.
Or your own, I don't know what.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I am compiling that list.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine. And then, Dot, you've been talking to Jim.
Jim, our athletic director, um, a couple of weeks ago, and I actually spoke to him again today, and he is in the process of doing the, um, data collection around the league, our league, in terms of what their fees are and what they include, and, uh, to be looking at what all of the options are, and not just what the options are, but what pluses and minuses of each of them, so we have some basis for making a decision. And one example would be, one could argue that by having three sports for one fee, that encourages kids to participate more, and that's always a desirable thing. On the other hand, if you're the child that only participates in one sport, it may not feel fair to you that, uh, you're paying as much as somebody who's getting three. You can look at the same data both ways. So, so it's collecting the data for the leagues, but also, uh, looking at not just what other people do, but what other parameters there could be around, around the fee thing. So, at this point, that's what he's doing in terms of collecting, and then we talked briefly about, so now we have this data. So, what kind of a group? We want some representation there, but, um, just to have another set of different perspective is important, but not such a huge committee that one couldn't get anything accomplished, so.
Okay, so that's progressing. Um, other subcommittee reports, do you want to?
I'd just like to mention that we have our survey out.
Oh.
It's live. It's on our website, and I shared it with Pinboard on Facebook. It's on the Hingham Public Schools Facebook page. Is there anything you want to add, Jamie, to that?
It was in the Hingham Journal, too.
In the Hingham Journal, so-
So, I just, I might just mention that we talked to Stacker today. They reached out, and I talked to, um, Thomas Sterling, the director. Um, as of this morning, there were over 440 responses, and over 60 people who wanted to be on focus groups.
Wow.
To now.
So, I'll be reaching, it's okay. I'll be reaching out to Kay to talk a little bit about whether we want to adjust a little bit of our initial work with them, just because in the initial proposal, they were going to review 150 surveys.
Right.
So, they didn't think we'd be, so this is excellent news, don't get me wrong.
A lively town.
Excellent news.
That's very involved.
And we're very excited that they're giving us feedback, right, so that, that's important. Um, but just so you know, less than 72 hours in, over 440, 448. As of, and that was as of early this morning, late last night, um, and then over 60 respondents volunteering for focus groups. So, fantastic response so far.
I honestly think that's great feedback, too, for us. I had one parent reach out to me, saying, "I'm so glad to see the Hingham Public Schools doing this," uh, which was really nice to hear, because a lot of that's came from the forums that we had about communication, digital presence. So, um, the fact that they are, because I know we've been asking for them to take a lot of surveys lately.
Yeah.
So, it's appreciated.
Are the responses divided up by, like, parents?
We can sort them by, I don't think they told us that.
That was just for over 400, all set, all told.
All, okay.
We haven't not received the breakdown. He was just giving us an informal, "Hey, I've worked with a lot of school districts. This is the best by far I've seen in such a short period of time." And it's open for the month, so this is the first 72, so we're just thoughtful that we're going to-
I was going to actually do this one.
So, we might hit our budget number quite quickly.
No, I mean, we could talk, that's what I'm saying, I'll reach out, and maybe we could talk a little bit about, I'll reach out to him. He also wants some sort of direction for us for next step. So, we'll, we'll reach out and sort of do a quick, a brief update, um, probably after the vacation week, when things are settling in, and, um, but no, it's off to a great start, and we really-
So, I would suggest to community outreach that we meet, oh my goodness, we're going to have to get new subcommittees, and, um,
That's right.
But I, I don't think it makes point, meeting until we get that data back anyway.
Cynthia's on duty until May 7th.
So, and I don't know how quickly they want-
Even though the election happens, it's not until the new person's sworn in, so you can fit in a meeting.
We had a prior example of someone that continued on a particular project.
Yeah, yep. They were appointed as- Yeah, that person volunteered. That person offered their services. We haven't heard that from Cynthia yet.
I just want to add that part.
I sent, uh, two things last Thursday or Friday to this committee, to the community outreach committee, because two very well-known, um, vendors of, uh, software that is communication-oriented, and two, the major ones that are out there, both sent separately surveys that are very similar to this survey, and in terms of trying to assess what, uh, parents particularly, um, want in terms of communication, and the how of the communication. And, um, so now we have not only our own survey, we've got comparison data that's national. And, um, I'm, I'm really curious as to where we're going to follow. I, I kind of think we're going to follow the same place they did, and then we could say, "Ah, we didn't need to do the survey because somebody else did it for us," so.
You always want to know our own, own data.
So, Salary and Negotiations, we have a bargaining session on Wednesday. Um, and we are also hopefully finalizing our template administrator's contract. Since we have an administrator, we need to have it ready for him.
And I just want to mention, Policy obviously discussed the, the SPRT, um, first reading draft, but then we also had a request to take another look at the EPIPENS, um, potential policy about that, and, and, um, school purchased versus parent provided, so we are looking at that again. Um, our concerns remain the same, but we will look at that again.
And Dot, I noticed in our packet, we did have the report for the transition room, for the middle school transition room.
Yeah.
But it's still set up the old way, so I don't know if she realized that going forward, one of the things Policy did was-
I would guess she did not.
Okay. Um, Policy asked the, the person who prepares that information for us to, to reformat the entire way it's provided. She had all the information. It was just a matter of categorizing people differently, so moving forward-
I think that she thought of that as a one-time piece of it, but-
Yeah, I think that, I think we thought that that was going to be how we'd see it from now on, so I'm sure that'll be fine.
Okay, anyone else? Special Ed Subcommittee, we, um, we met before our last meeting, and on this Wednesday is the CPAC meeting, and they are talking about, uh, new officer slate for the next year, and apparently they have candidates for the offices, so, um, we will be having new CPAC officers, um, in May, I believe the election is. So, more to come, but we will.
And sorry, I just remembered, on Wednesday, I believe, Ed, you were still joining me, at the Plymouth River PTO meeting to, um, discuss our, part of our community outreach, to discuss our upcoming things on the town meeting agenda. And I think that's the last meeting.
I had one at South, went really, really well, and, um-
Unfortunately, the one at East turned out to be doing MCAS.
That's right.
So, it was rescheduled to the day after town meeting. So, I'll still go if they will have me, but, um, it won't be quite as effective as the other ones.
And since Libby is here, um, and, um, I don't see Carrie, but I'll make sure that she knows as well. On the Monday, we always, um, leave the Monday after the election, that first Monday, to be an orientation session for people who are newly elected to the committee. So, um, that's Monday, the-
30.
30? Okay, Monday the 30.
Right.
Yeah. And I'll be sure that Carrie gets that information as well.
And one other community announcement- And one other community announcement. Friday, April 27th, at 6:00 PM, there is a free event at Hingham Middle School that Andrew Nemeche, our MECO director, is hosting. Movie about the 50th anniversary of MECO and the busing crisis at the time. And the producer of the movie is going to be there. And that is open to the public and free. So, anyone is welcome. And bring your children, too. I think it'd be good for them to understand some of the history of schools in Massachusetts and why things are done the way they're done in certain places because of that event in our life. Yeah, it's Friday, April 27th, 6:00 PM. So, it's in...
At the middle.
At the middle school. So, it's an early event. So, unless anyone else has anything, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Right, so move.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.